Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It is October 3rd, 2024, and it is 6:30. We're starting on time. I'm gonna call roll call. Terry Werner?
Here.
Matthew McGovern?
Here.
Laura Sanchez Fowler?
Here.
Mike McClabb?
Here.
Sam Houston-Clinton?
Here.
And I'm Mayor Glaze, and we're all here. Please rise for the pledge of.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and to the Texas flag. Under the text of the flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texans, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And please remain standing for the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for this beautiful little city, and thank you, Lord, for the rain that we have had this summer. And for God, we do pray for more rain. We're kind of dry right now. And Heavenly Father, we do pray for guidance. Tonight, we have a couple of very important decisions to make. And Lord God, as always, I thank you for the gift of salvation. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we have one public comment. Mary Beth? You can stand where you are.
Anyway, I talk about these issues monthly in my group. We have the South Mountain Bounce classes, so I hand out there on the table. Off calls are like the number one thing that causes elderly might be people who lose their freedom. Anyway, this has all this information on here. We have a program that starts October the 16th. It's several Wednesdays from 9:00 till 11:00, when we throw a hatchet go to the kitchen. And all you have to do is register. It's called the library number down there, and it's all free. And this is from area agency or agent, and also Capitol Area. Some other, what is it? Cap Card? Also, the Fall Family Festival, that's on the other side. This is Saturday, October 19th, from 10:00 to 1:00. We have a bounce house, and I think maybe a face planner. We have lots of games, tug-of-war, fishing booth, and lots of prizes. And it's gonna be in the grassy area if possible. This is based on a grant that was sent payments. And then on Saturday, November 16th, it's art education for children. We'll have music, dance, art theater. And if you didn't know it, Martindale is a part desert. Also, it's a medical desert, too. And this is paid for by the Save Children grant. And then on Friday, December 6th, we have downtown tree lighting. Santa will run through the neighbors, handing out tree bags. And the library will have letters to Santa and other activities. We'll have vendors, food and beverages, and this will be inside the food store. We have a grant from Save the Children to teach young children, preschool kids, all the skills that they need to enter kindergarten, that can learn the colors, or letters, and numbers, shapes, and so on. This is every part of taking them to the library. That's free. Food pantry right outside the library, and it is packed right now. The library is this out in Caldwell County Food Bank. It's those free food items. Everyone will add hygiene items in there shortly. And if you know that anyone who needs help with their food, just tell them, and that gets completely anonymous. Just go there. Also, the library is still open for volunteers. If you have extra time, you can love books, even shelf books, you can volunteer for some more activities. And we would love to have. Every Friday morning, from 12:00, there's coffee and conversation. Then a book club is the first party of the month. That's two to three. That's the book club. Then Lego Club is the third Wednesday. It's October 16th, the 4th to 5th. And there's a lot of other activities for adults, including the Lego Club, practice forms, and other things. Finally, y'all are voting on the contract between the city and Martindale from the Aggie Library for the calendar year 2025. And the library board, the library director, and I have not seen this contract. It's made near contract. We'd have to go to our library board to approve it or change anything in it, and then it comes back to the city. But again, thank you, though, for providing the $24,000 for the city budget. Oh, and also, the River Appreciation Festival was wonderful. We appreciate Sonia and Chelsea James and all the others. And everybody that helped put that on is wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is gonna go in the utility building billing. And so that goes out on the 18th, and this is on the 19th. So if you can help spread the word for the library, that would be greatly appreciated. Yeah. Okay. Was there any more public comments?
Just that one.
We're gonna go into the presentation now with.
So Jerry, she told me there's just gonna be a brief update on the GLO and Resilient Communities Program. That's why Dennis is on Zoom right now. But that's pretty much it. It's just a brief update. No presentation.
Yeah, we were gonna have a workshop today, but Jerry had said that since we're having the Dreams Workshop, and there's gonna be a lot of fantastic information come out of that, she'd like to have the workshop after that Dreams Workshop that took place, I guess, that you and Adrian went to, and Matthew went.
Yeah, I think there was a couple of council members went to it in Lewing.
And Mike.
So yeah, that'd be a fantastic opportunity. Lot of overlap between those two activities. So is there another activity?
There's gonna be another Dreams Workshop, she said. You know, I'm gonna have to get the date.
Okay, Tim, Dennis, and Jerry, y'all should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Dennis Koo.
There we go.
Oh, there you go, Jerry.
I was trying to get the find the mute button. Hi, everyone. Sorry we're not there in person tonight, but we wanted to zoom in. I'm Jerry Camrato, and most of you know me through the Resilient Communities Program with Langford, and Dennis and Tim are also on the line. We wanted to zoom in and give you just a quick update and tell you about the exciting opportunity with Charm, which is the group that does, yes, they do the workshops, and that is going to be on November 14th, when we had, I'm sorry, I'm out in front of something, and a siren is just going by, so I hope that's not too loud. We are going to work with you at the Charm Workshop, and Dennis and Tim can give you a little bit more about what's involved in that. But before I throw it to them, I wanted just to mention we're about at the halfway point. We've done a lot of assessments. We've done a lot of the base studies and a lot of the meat of the Resilient Communities Plan. You got about 62 comments from the community, which we'll share those with you. I'll be sending those to you to review in the next week or so. But very exciting. We're getting close to the preliminary draft and starting to pull that together. So Tim and or Dennis, you want to tell a little more about the workshop?
Hi, it's Tim. What we worked and coordinated with the Texas AgriLife Group that does the Charms Workshop, and they do the resiliency planning. Your River Advisory Committee had requested a presentation from them about their capabilities. And from that, it turned into a nice study that they're gonna do for Martindale and look at more as a regional effort on managing the river and water quality, and some of the other water issues. They contacted us, and we worked it out that it would be good for them to do their workshop here in November, because they want to do a report in December. So we stepped back and said, why don't you guys get your report done? And then we'll come back and start our comprehensive planning process with that report available as well, so we'll be more, we'll have a lot deeper information to start our comprehensive planning effort with you guys to determine future growth and some of the other things we're gonna be doing in the comprehensive plan. So it's a real good opportunity for us to really go deeper into the regional water management that we're not really contracted to do, but we can, but Charms is, so it's a good compliment, both to their effort and to ours.
Yeah, and I think one of the key keys that they're trying to get some of the county commissioners or some of the county folks and other regional stakeholders who can help out to attend the Charms Workshop, so that we can have some real conversations, I guess, between regional partners.
That sounds good. Do we have a time for that yet?
Do we have a time for that yet?
I'm trying to remember. I think it was scheduled. Tim, do you remember? I'm not sure what. I don't have my notes in front of me here. Let's see.
I don't think. I haven't sent out the official.
Yeah, they haven't sent the official meeting invite yet.
We know where it's gonna be.
Thanks, Dorothy, for your help.
I will figure that out and get right back with you. I apologize. I didn't think through that they hadn't. We encouraged them to have it, and I'm pretty sure it's gonna be in your City Hall area there. I just don't know how much room they need or exactly. So I'll confirm those details, and Catherine, I'll get that to you so we can get it out for everyone.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, thanks a lot, everyone.
Can we ask you questions, or you just want us to wait?
No, you can ask questions.
Okay, I'm on the City Council, Sam Clinton, and you mentioned the river. Could you just say briefly how the water aspect of that is playing into your survey? Or what are you saying about the river, then?
Tim, you want to answer that?
It's not that we're saying anything. It's that Charms is that they're going to conduct a, this workshop with you that identifies the different issues. It could be riverfront preservation, water quality management, regional initiatives or county initiatives. And they, if you haven't been to one of their workshops, what they can do is model out different decisions that could be made regarding, say.
Water quality.
Yeah, water quality and development in certain areas of the watershed. So that's, that's what they'll work through with you. And again, also getting other entities involved, like Caldwell County, San Marcos River Authority, and I'm not sure who all they've worked with on other, try to get them involved. So it's really driven by you guys, the people that are gonna be in the workshop.
Yeah, if you, some of you actually were at the last workshop. They basically start a conversation and try to draw out basically the most, the biggest concerns that you all have, you know, regarding water quality and those sorts of things in your area. And we already, we identified at that meeting that was very important to you all, the previous meeting. And so I guess they must have worked with, I don't know if they worked with you, Jared, if they worked with.
Adrian.
Adrian, with Adrian, I'm sorry, yeah, with Adrian to coordinate this meeting after that meeting. But our understanding is that's what the Charms Workshop, this next one, is to focus in on Martindale's concerns about water quality in the river. And then what we, what we kind of decided at the last meeting was that there, we didn't have the right regional partners at that meeting. They didn't come, or they weren't invited. I'm not sure what happened there. But that, because that collaboration between the city of Martindale and some of the areas around you will be key, in our opinion, on being able to do anything about, you know, managing the quality of the river.
Tim, this is Michael Clapp, City Council. You know, we've talked about this among ourselves and the public. I think one of the biggest things this falls into is a regional discharge sewer plant that is, it is recharge, no discharge into the beautiful river. And we've been talking to the county and other entities about a zero discharge plan, and we need to focus, we need money. This town always needs money. It's millions of dollars. But I guess we discussed that at the workshop. For me personally, there is the councils says the same thing. That, to me, that's one of the biggest threats in the area of these developers coming in with these multiple package plants and, you know, not getting, you know, even if you get a 552.5, that's not good for the river because of pharmaceutical drugs and et cetera. It really needs to be a zero discharge plan. And that, for we can save our precious water and hopefully keep that beautiful San Marcos River blowing clear and clean. Thank you.
This is Laura Fowler, and I just wanted to actually make a comment directed to Mike. I am, I found you money.
Oh, you did?
Yes, for that.
Have you?
If you want.
I want it.
It's for any, it's like, it will fund serious infrastructure.
Let's do it.
So we could do that, because they mentioned this.
Thanks for telling me that. Everybody should know. Good.
Yeah, so I.
You made my day.
I'm working on that, and I absolutely need y'all's feedback anyhow.
You got my feedback.
So, yeah, I can kind of start focusing that direction.
Maybe before the work, we're talking about, maybe during the workshop, we discuss all that. Because really, it's a regional problem.
Yeah.
Because Lounging affects what we do.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, that's, what we promised is, you know, we won't wait to the end of the plan. We, whenever opportunities come up, we'll certainly research funding opportunities for, yeah, especially things we know that are gonna be in your strategic implementation plan at the end of this RCP process. We don't want to delay any opportunities, because, you know, we haven't officially finished the preliminary plan. So it's, you know, it's live action. We're gonna react to whatever's available, when it's available.
Well, it's really kind of a serious situation we're in, because these developers are coming in with these multiple permits, TCQ, for these package plants, and we really need to get on top of that as a city and as a region to really focus on getting a original plan here in Martindale for developers to book into. And that could be discussed at the workshop.
I'm sure it will be.
Oh, I'll make sure to discuss. Thank you, sir.
I just have one more question to your panel there, Jerry and Tim. But, you know, we're a small town here, 1,200 people with a budget of less than a million dollars. And Sage has been slow, but what familiarity do you guys have with working with smaller towns with limited money and budgets? What, have you worked with any other towns of our size?
Most of the towns we're working with are close to your size, actually. Like Lexington, and we're working with Wimberly, which is maybe a little bit bigger than y'all. But they also have a very similar, I guess, MO in that they want to protect the environment around their city as well, because of basically their whole, their economy is dependent upon a lot of the, you know, Jacob's Well and Blue Hole and the features around there. And so they're very concerned about, they're going through a lot of the same thing you all are. There's lots of explosive development around them. And so they're trying to manage the, do what they can to basically ensure that their city remains basically, you know, pristine as well.
What, what is your feeling about how you feel about, say, Asheville, North Carolina, and all the development that they have along their river? How, how have you felt, or how has that impact of that changed your mindset or your strategy about river communities?
You mean of the flooding around Asheville?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I don't know that it's changed anything as far as, you know, I do, but clearly, you know, that was, that was, you know, a thousand-year storm. You can't blame it for everything.
But, yeah, well, the thing that caught my, you know, still kind of sticks in my head is that, I don't know if you guys have seen it online, but the picture of the person that built their cabin 12 feet high, I mean, off the ground, when it wasn't required. And, you know, they were proud to show the picture of their cabin not flooded, because the water didn't get past 12 feet. It kind of makes you think about, you know, thinking even farther ahead that, you know, there's acceptable risk, and, you know, we develop ordinances and regulations around that. But there may be a place to even go a little further than what's the minimum required. You know, and I think that's something we should all discuss, because, you know, this keeps happening, where we have these events that overcome what our expectations and assumptions are that we'll ever get. You know, it's like thinking about an earthquake in central Texas. We've not had one, maybe ever, but we're sitting on a big fault line that, you know, despite any of our predictions and planning, could erupt and change the whole face of central Texas. You know, I don't know if that's an answer, but it's what's been on my mind considering this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Tim, we have one more thing. I'll shut up. We talked about North Carolina, but this little town's in the bullseye, unfortunately, for all of us that live here. I'm not blaming Kyle or Beal or Sam Marcus, but the spluster growth upstream of us, impervious cover, man, it's getting, it's, it's, it's happening with rooftops, sidewalks, roads. We're gonna have some major future flooding, and we, as a city, I don't know if we could ever be prepared, but that discussion needs to be discussed thoroughly.
I agree, and, you know, honestly, this is Dennis. You know, that's, I think, part of why the Charms people wanted to have this next workshop, because a lot of the runoff and impervious cover issues, water quality issues, all that is gonna take a regional effort, you know, as well. And so, you know, getting, getting, collaborating and starting the conversation going with Hayes County and the city, San Marcos and some of these other cities in your area, making sure that they're kind of doing their job, and that y'all are seeing eye to eye on standards and what kind of standards need to be enforced and required of developers is extremely important at this juncture.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate the update.
Okay, we'll talk to you soon. Thanks, everyone.
Bye. Bye.
Talk soon.
Bye-bye. Okay, lots of good questions. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome, there.
And also, I wanted to thank the people who did the River Appreciation and the OYOU, Dorothy and Terry are sitting in the audience. And a lot of other people. And then also the National Night Out. We had about 50 people attend. It was really fun. The fire department came over, and they got a call and had to get to show their siren and everything. So that was exciting. Okay, so tonight, we, the city has a proclamation, and I wanted to welcome our guests that have come from the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, right? And would you like to introduce yourselves?
Sure.
You can just, you can just sit down.
Okay. My name is Nicole Preston, and I am the counseling program director for.
Thank you.
I'm Nathan Thompson, of our creative projects.
You look like a really creative person. You're probably excellent at that job.
And I'm Desiree Norman, and I am the shelter program director.
Okay, all right, so we have a proclamation about domestic violence. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates the basic human rights of safety and dignity, and 216 Texans were killed in an intimate partner homicide, including 179 women and 37 men. Whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group of people, but cut across all economic, racial, gender, and societal barriers. And whereas the impact of domestic violence and teen dating violence directly affects individuals and communities when society ignores or tolerates violence in relationships. And whereas last year, Hayes Caldwell Women's Center provided face-to-face services to over 1,044 local victims of domestic violence and provided 7,438 days of shelter. And whereas last year, Hayes Caldwell Women's Center provided these direct services to 15 victims from the city of Martindale. Now, therefore, I, Catherine Glaze, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Martindale, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and call upon the people of Martindale to work together with Hayes Caldwell Women's Center and local partners to bring an end to domestic violence. And so we do have this to present to you, and I guess if council could come up here, we'll get a picture.
That's one of the requirements.
Some people get tall people in the bathroom.
Oh, hold on, I'll be right back.
We want to follow. Yes, we'll stick it because I need to get from the back.
Yeah.
Behind you or. Where you want the other side of that?
That should be a friend, yeah. Come on, yeah. He's booting this way. We don't like.
He's gonna get the heat around him going. Everyone wants to get closer. There he is.
Thank you.
Oh, you betcha.
While I get back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're not skating yet.
Right here.
There's not a good one in there, y'all.
I have a question for y'all. Can we ask you a question?
Sure.
So, can you please explain? Why is it that in the domestic violence statistics that you were just sharing? I appreciate that you broke out Martindale. That's nice to, like, it's not nice. But I mean, it's nice to know what the status is in Martindale. But then, why are children under, like, child abuse and not under domestic violence? Like it's just it's what you were saying is it's this many women and this many men. But domestic violence is like at home, right? So then isn't aren't children part of that environment? Is that just like a, why is it, why are they?
That statistic was for people that were actually murdered. And so I don't believe that there were any children in that statistic.
That was.
That were murdered.
Those were for, yeah. Were murdered in Texas.
So children, if they were murdered, would have been in there. It's just that they just by coincidence weren't because they weren't.
The way the state considers them, so we get our information from the Texas Council on Family Violence. They run the statistics on that. Uh they count them as secondary, I think, victims.
Yeah.
So they're not included in that number, but I know they just have their town hall on Tuesday and there were some child victims. Um that were murdered as part of a domestic violence dispute, so it does happen, uh but they didn't report out those numbers.
I I think they would be reported under child abuse. Or.
Quite possibly.
I don't think they're usually considered part of domestic violence, but it doesn't make sense to me.
I think domestic violence. And so that that's why they that's why they keep those that way and then there's. There's there's different definitions, so it probably do that in a more appropriate category.
And also for children, children a lot of times are witnesses. To domestic violence and they are not survivors themselves, and so that kind of excuse the numbers as well.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes, you're welcome to stay here. Well, actually, right now, we're gonna break into executive session, so. Listen, I I have asked Diana to stay. Thank you.
You can go get get some cold refreshment over there.
Yeah, we do. We can go in the police station. It's it.
It's a small closet over that way.
About as big as the bathrooms.
Yeah.
All right, so it is eight twenty-one and we are back in a regular session. And we have met with uh Andrew Cable for the position of municipal court. And um I'm ready for someone to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I would like to motion that we. Wait, hold on, I can do that. I don't think I've made one. Terry, I usually count on you for this. Thought I would try to saddle up. All right, my first one. I make a motion that we. Offer.
Points.
A point.
A point.
A point. Anthony.
No, Andrew.
Andrew. Cable to the position of municipal judge for the city of Martindale at a rate of twelve fifty a month. Uh for the next ninety days, at which time we will reevaluate the the. The what? The appointment.
Yeah, there you go.
I thought you said disappointment. I'm like, what? Do that.
Okay, so.
Did that eventually come out okay?
Yeah, it was perfect. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, so you have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none. Oh, do I have to take a roll call vote on this one? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, none opposed, the motion carries.
Thank you all very, very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay or if you wanna.
You have a phone, yes, I'll be.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your night.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the last item on our agenda is to discuss uh to. Uh the library contract, which will end at the end of this year, so we have to get another one in place for next year. And so I have given council a paper copy of the one that was signed in two thousand twenty-four. And then in the packet is the library agreement. Services agreement that we are proposing for two thousand twenty-five. The main um difference would be. Well, under responsibilities, one C. Uh between last year's contract and this year's contract. Do you want me to read that or do? Okay, so in two thousand twenty-four, one C says provide Martindale with only the financial information required. By nonprofits under the law in the library during the library business hours. And the one we're proposing is provide Martindale with a written financial statement and. Of the two thousand twenty-four federal tax return not later than April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. For calendar year two thousand twenty-four with an addendum providing fund account balances. As of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And a description and amounts for all funds received include including grants. So are there? Um and the rest of it is pretty much the same, is really the same as. Uh the two thousand twenty-four contract. That's really the only thing that was changed was.
See, that was it.
Two, two, one, C. I guess you'd say call it. So I made them different. Uh there are a couple of copies. Under the agendas um on the podium. There we go.
That's the only thing that changed. Yes. Was that was that Paris?
We had a council member ask for more specific information and I agreed, so. This is the contract we're putting forth.
Is is Dwight, is he still on that? I have a question I can help answer.
Yeah, uh I got the question, uh. If if the city ever got audited. Would would that be requirement to have that information in audit? That we had an audit.
I I don't see any scenario where that would be required unless we're using. Grant funds and the grant was subject to uh to an audit. Most of the time, it'd be. In normal operation, no, per seably, no.
The the audit's only of the city's financial condition. We. If you extrapolate that out, then the city audit would also require full financial audit of any other person or entity that is.
Good question.
Um I know in the past that the library had wifi and then I thought the city was using. Part of that or had we upgraded our wifi enough to where? Wasn't there some collaboration between the wifi's that the library had and what? We were using or there was never any collaboration on on that?
At at times we've used their wifi if our wifi servers was down. That hasn't happened in a while, but now we have provided a a public guest wifi. At which what didn't exist, so if someone came to a city council meeting and wanted to connect the internet, so connecting through. The libraries, they can connect through ours.
How do they know what that password is?
It's up, it's on the podium.
It's on the plane.
How would they know that it's on the podium?
It asks. So it's it's really intended for people who are presenting. Um but it's also available. The library makes their password available to anybody walking past the front door. And frankly, they they get a much better service than probably the city provides in terms of. Then, so. But the city is not reliant on their wifi.
And I and I know in the past that you had looked at the numbers and and crunched that. So to speak in regard to what the library claims the money they need in order to remain accredited. Can you just refresh me about is it half of what they spend and then the city has to give that? Can you just briefly?
Yeah, so there. The minimum um spending levels are set by. The administrative code that manages the accreditation for libraries. That is based off of a. The purpose of it is to show that there's a continued maintenance of a library over a duration of time and always continuing to improve. So the way that the state code calculates as you look at the the average of the last three years of. Local funds that have been expended and then um continue to meet that average over the last three years. Where it came to a discussion point in prior contract negotiation was. The the amount that was set was higher than that minimum level. And so even at this twenty-four thousand. My understanding and anticipation would be that twenty-four thousand again exceeds the minimum level that's needed for accreditation. If you continue to do that over successive period of years. You're putting and they become reliant on that and they use all those funds that are given. That average now starts to show what money has been given, so. Continuing to fund at a twenty-four thousand dollar rate, which was last year's, and again on this proposed. Pretty soon that expectation is gonna. It's going to. Basically have to match that twenty-four thousand, so. Can't go down. You can't go down. We're gonna lose the ability to 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 make it a lesser amount in subsequent years. By continuing to fund over the mandatory.
Average is consistent over a three-year period.
If we look at just the the it gets more effective than just this contract. But the contract builds into it. So if you take the contract by itself and keep all else steady. If the contract for was eighteen thousand, twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand, the average for three years would be twenty thousand. But over a period of time, if it's twenty-four thousand, twenty-four thousand, twenty-four thousand, the average for that period becomes twenty-four thousand. What that does is if you ever want to do less than twenty-four thousand, that puts a significant burden. On the library that they would have to make up that difference in order to meet those minimum spending limits. And so um there there's a mutual reliance in a lot of ways on what dollar figures are set here. Creating expectations and how they operate the library going forward, so we're expected by the state to continue that same level of operation. Here, what the twenty-four thousand dollars is used for is for a hired library director. That's it's it's almost a direct salary payment. So. That's reflected in the continuing operations. If the city were to walk away from this, for example. Continuing that operation of a library director. Would would be and meeting their minimum spending. Be a significant burden on the library that the Caldwell will. Does it become a liability? So. It it I don't think it's been an issue in prior councils. You know, having that that level of uh financial support to the library. But if that was a concern of maintaining it, that's where it would be. Continuing to fund at a higher level. I think at this point now that we funded near twenty thousand dollars for. This would be your three or so. Your that that difference, which once was quite sizable, you know, ten thousand dollars, nine thousand, eight thousand, whatever it was. That difference, if the city wanted to spend less. It's probably not much more or less than twenty-four thousand at this point. We're talking, yeah. Probably a couple thousand dollars. At the most. And it and that was whole thing is the minimums, the the there's a step up for the minimum that the library. Quote-unquote needs, but is there also a formula that falls in, so there's a double tier on that, but kind of. You know, walked ourselves into it, just understand. Yeah, and but going forward, there is the standard is going to be that one for, you know, that's. That's 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 what it is, you know what I mean? So whether we fund it or we don't fund it.
There's inflation, there's costs that go up and all that.
Right now, it's, you know, that's the commitment that the we have on the budget. We budgeted it. We found a way to to make it work. Um we'll know how we did last year in about thirty days, whether we're over or under for. Last of the year, we're gonna be under in a few things and over in a few things, so we'll see how we are, but that's. You know, we've been over for a couple of years now, so. I'm hoping we're gonna be over, you know.
And most of this contract just mirrors what the Texas administrative podium for libraries. The minimum standards of twenty hours per week.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that was the 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 feedback I received from the library is it wanted to reduce the verbiage. Um but the verbiage that we have in here is just is actually Jared quoted the code. You know, uh so you actually just pulled the quote, the the twenty hours a week is quote quoting. You know, copying and pasting it directly from the code, that's the minimum requirement, so there's some detail in there. Um the detail on C is basically a requirement of. Uh the the code that kept brought up with regard to what nonprofit has to be available to the financial information. That's section twenty-two dash three fifty-three of the uh. Um organizational code and it's required that all nonprofits have that, so if you have a nonprofit. And someone asks you for it, these are things you have to provide. And um I think we've the 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 library's been very forthcoming with giving that information, so it's it's available. Um here it is, all we're doing is it's gonna be presented to the mayor and to the city, so the city has a copy of it here. That's basically the difference in the contract.
Well, I know last year we went back and forth over a contract several times and. I think this was one of the sticking points.
This was the sticking point.
This was the sticking point.
Well, there were a few other things too that we took out that didn't really necessarily apply that were kind of legalese. That we took out.
But the major one was was this, but.
That was the final one, yeah. Yeah, the punitive damages were removed. That was one. Those punitive damages were in there at one point. Uh it was a few other. Creative uh. Legalese in there. Now, you wanna if you wanna watch them, I got them for you.
Oh, yeah, no, I. No, no, I I.
Run through, you know?
No. Less than anyone else does. I mean, they're not as familiar with that. What we did last last year and that's almost why I asked Jared to explain that.
I've got a copy of last year, so I mean, I. I don't really need to know more than this is what you eventually agreed on.
Yes.
And then this is what you're proposing for this year.
So that's that's, yeah, that very straight. But I think though that the library is al- almost it says a minimum of twenty a week, but it almost seems to me that they're open. More than that.
Oh, yeah, they can be open more.
This is the minimum, minimum, yeah.
Now, notice that in one uh where it also says the. At the last of the sentence, with reasonable exceptions, if there's a ice storm. Of course, they're not gonna be open twenty hours a week. I mean, that's why that phrase is there. Or. Or, you know, Ashley's going to have a baby and she's not going to be there twenty hours.
She's going to take some time and there'll be other people covering for her.
Yeah, we're going to have other people come here, so we do meet that, that twenty hours. Let y'all know the library's not going to be closed for that entire airtime.
So we're not going to count every minute that.
You know, the illness.
Right.
Our, there was a funeral for one of our.
Yeah.
Volunteers.
Yeah.
So we had to pause.
Right.
That's why that phrase was.
Yeah.
And she's going to have the baby right around Christmas, so it worked out beautifully. Because the library's closed right around Christmas anyway, so.
That was a nice plan, you know.
I'm telling you.
So when, George, Dorothy, will the board meet again and will you?
The board meets next Thursday. I'll present that to them.
Yes.
I'm the board chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll present that to them. I can tell that they're not going to accept that. There was the same stuff last year, same garbage. Very early that was how we feel. We can't say that again.
No, I didn't.
The second that's on the old contract is same thing.
We want it spelled out.
So, so the, what, what would happen after this, the council, if, if he chose to approve this? This would be the formal contract offer to be made to the library for them to accept or decline. And then we'd perceive, you know, from there.
Well, I know last year we had several meetings, several discussions, and it did take up some time. And so maybe we can see the reaction and work on it from there.
I pretty much see it as non-negotiable. I think this is what we want.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion to approve this contract?
Well, I'm waiting for a little more discussion. I think if there's some, I mean, Ashley just walked in, so. But if it's non-negotiable, if he says that, then that's what we're hearing from the mayor, so.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Mayor. You said that, I apologize for my ignorance, that, that verbiage comes straight from a specific?
Not the one C that we just put in that we wanted that, those documents. No, one A is where just twenty hours a week and from the administrative code. Yeah.
But even, even so, with this one C, I mean, since last year, we have not even requested any detailed information from the library at all regarding their expenditures or their spreadsheets, are you right?
I have not.
You have not? I don't even think, think we have, so.
The way to get it is you have to go there to get it.
Well, I mean, it, it said it was available during the day, I think. And, and, and yet I don't see much difference in us saying that and saying that we're requesting it. We're requesting it there at any interval of time. Or here, we're specifically setting the parameters to a more concise request, perhaps. And, and, and so that's.
Okay, there's a, um, American state or federal, anyway, there's a law that says that nonprofits provide totally sort of information to their place of business, here and there powers when you're open. Okay, that's, that's why that statement's.
Well, maybe then if you compiled all the information from last year, then if we did come in during the day and want to see it, then, then we can.
It's available since he signed last year.
Last year's been available.
Okay. Well, one of us might just come, come in and see if you think it balanced out great and things worked, worked fine, then that reassures me that, that the information has been consolidated and compiled. But this is something that is definitely different, more specific. And I don't really see the, the challenge of this to where it seems disruptive or not something that could be granted to the city. I don't see the challenge. I, 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 I don't, I, I, I don't. I mean, you'll speak to the board, but I, I just don't see the reasoning behind challenging this if you seem to say that it's available at any time during the day. I mean, what's the difference? We're, we're just putting dates on it, really. We're, we're just saying, these are the dates, this is what we want, and it's just written more specifically. I mean, so that's how I feel about it partially. I'm done with my comment. Any, anyone else?
I'll make a motion to.
Let me help you out.
I make the motion to approve the contract with the city of Martindale, Martindale Community Library for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-five with the addition of the, what's highlighted in there. Go up there to this.
Item two, one.
Be what to read it?
Two, one, C.
Me to read it?
Yeah, I, I can.
Okay, I'll make the motion. Two, one, C. Provide Martindale with a written financial statement and a two thousand and twenty-four federal tax return no later than April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five for calendar year two thousand and twenty-four with an addendum of providing fund account balances as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, any description and amounts for all funds received, including grants, and provide Martindale with a written invoice fifteen days prior to payment.
Oh, that's, that's, that's enough.
That's enough.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Hey, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Could I have something to be put on the agenda for next meeting?
Sure.
The summary, would you do a post-report on the San Marcos River Appreciation Day at the next meeting, please?
Oh, that'll be good.
So we're working on the report and the accounting for the city council. We'll be using that form that, that we use to get the money. We're going to use a similar form for our post-reporting.
Okay.
And I know the guy who wrote all the checks and did the financing, so I'm pretty sure he can handle it by then.
And would that be a similar thing that we would do with O I O O U?
Yeah, I, I talked to Jared about that. There's a standard that I sent to the mayor and Jared about from, they found it from T M L. And it's from the tourism board and they have a, a standard of forms. And that's what I gave to Sonia and Chelsea. And I said, you're not getting this approved until you fill this out. And that's what they presented. You could tell it looked a whole lot better than what the mayor first got from them. I know what they, she first got from them. And it, it did provide a lot of like focus for them about why, you know, does it qualify? It was very, it was very enlightening for them too, so it was, it was, it was good. It was good. And it was, and it was a great event. I wish all, I wish you were here. Over the weekend.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay, wait, one, one last question. What, what about planning and zoning the meeting we were going to have? I mean, what's the update on what we're doing for this month?
I'll, I'll provide that to the chair and the vice chair on this council.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Okay.
At eight forty-six P M on October third.
My second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.